Thanks, Joe. Nice seeing you.
Thanks, Jan. Okay. So, public hearing time. A little bit late. You having trouble with mics?
Is he in black?
Yeah. But it's still the demo.
What is this on the?
Public hearing. So, well, the Board of Selectmen advertised a public hearing for this evening at 7:30. We're running a little bit behind schedule. It's now 7:35. The purpose of the public hearing tonight is to review the proposed use of LoCIP funds. That is part of it, to complete roof repairs and extend the current lease agreement. What drives the public hearing town meeting is the change to the lease agreement, not the use of LoCIP funds, but current lease agreement between ACT and the Town of Bridgefield to a 25-year term. Speaking with Town Council, there were, I handed out tonight on the table is what is a First Amendment to the lease. And if you would like, I can read it quickly so the public. There are some copies here on the right for people, if you want to get it. There are a bunch of whereases.
I think we could maybe waive. I mean, it's two whole pages.
Waive the reading?
Yeah. I would suggest we waive the reading.
I didn't mean to frighten you.
Oh, no, no, no. I mean, it's there. People need it to see it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to waive the reading. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you for the record. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries 5-0. Not put you through that. But there are two changes, as we said in the notice. Whereas the lease was originally for a period of five years and expires in, the first renewal expires in February of '22. Excuse me, the original expired in '22. The current one is in '27 because we did a renewal. What we are looking to do is to start anew through this amendment, add five, five-year tranches.
Starting today or starting when it's signed?
Well, it would start, the renewal term expires February 20th, '27. Therefore, in consideration for going covenant recitals, option to renew, provided that tenant is not in default, tenants shall have the right and option of extending the term of this lease that expires in '27.
Okay.
Right? For an additional five successive periods of five years each renewal term, subject to all the terms, covenants, and conditions of the lease. That's the first part. And we've been through this before with other 501s for the purpose of grants. A lot of your state and federal grants, NEA and some others, like to see a lease of at least 20, 20 to 25 years.
10 years.
So, we're modifying the length so that they can apply for grant money. The second has to do with the roof that's in bad shape. We're getting quotes on that now. We have one. We're expecting a second. Section B of Paragraph 5, condition alterations, et cetera, is deleted and replaced with the following for purposes of deleting the words, and it's three words, including the roof, from the section. So, this is one of the few leases to a 501 where we actually had the tenant picking up the cost of any roof repairs. They have asked for it to come out. I understand that. It's a major expense, something that a 501 doesn't readily handle, of course, in business in terms of having the financing available for that. So, we would like to modify the lease accordingly. So, that's what we're doing. I'll open the floor to the Board first for any questions, and then we'll go to the public.
I mean, the building is ours, so...
It is ours.
Yeah.
Did you get, what was the quote for the, initial quote for the LoCIP, for the funding?
It came in in sections roughly 230, 230, from one. He broke it down. This is McCarthy Roofing. Yes, that is correct.
Wow.
No.
And what's the scope of the repair if we replace the roof?
New roof.
New roof.
But that's only a section.
New portion.
Well, it's important whether we do the whole roof all at once or we do it in sections.
Well, what are we getting a bid on?
We're getting the bid. They broke it down into three sections.
And the 230 covers all three sections?
Yes.
Oh, the bid, oh, I'm sorry.
230 covers all three sections of the roof?
Yes.
That's full replacement? Okay.
And what kind of warranty is our roof coming with?
25, 30 years, depending on the thickness of the rubber membrane we put down. Most of our roofs are 25 to 30.
Okay.
The number is for the largest section, which is the theater itself, is 120. The rear part where it steps up and goes back is 54,000. And the, I believe it's the, no, the rear is 72,000. The ticket office where you go in, there's a roof, that's the third roof, is 54. So, those are the three numbers. 120, 72, and 54.
And LoCIP is there? The monies are there?
Yeah.
Or will be there?
Yeah. Well, what, what we're doing is the additional fund, you remember during budgets, we were talking about LoCIP, and Kevin was saying, you know, we've got 150. And I made the statement, well, it's been increased. We've already been notified of that.
Is that, I mean, 150 for next year? Or is it?
We get 152, 153 every year. It's a per capita allocation.
I was trying to figure out what, I mean, I...
The additional money coming that's been approved
Okay.
is 80,000 on top of that money.
So, it's there? The money's there?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. The money's there. It depends on how we want to spend it because we might want to do some other things first. An important sidewalk that needs to get done, although we're doing New Street now. LoCIP is a reimbursement. They have the ledger up at the Office of Policy Management, OPM. And when we submit, Allison Castrell, that works for Kevin Redman, tracks everything and then submits, they send us a check.
Okay, so, so other, other projects are being kind of preempted for this because this is an emergency?
No.
Or no?
No.
Is it a potential project? I don't think there's anything...
Future, would there be? Sure.
Well, I just trying to get a read on it right now.
I don't know what they are. It's mostly...
But is your question, like, is there something we were going to do that's being pushed aside?
Yes.
I don't think there is, right?
If we use the additional money, then no. But the additional money's 160 over two years, three years, it goes up. Technically, if we did 230, we're spending more than the next two-year of funding that we know.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
But we have last year and then the forthcoming year.
It, it doesn't expire.
The two, right, the two will cover this 230.
We have money now to cover it.
Okay. And not even counting next year?
Right.
Well, that's a nice position to be in.
We don't spend it all at once in any given year.
It's kind of a good thing that we've got a, that we've done that. I mean, for these types of emergencies.
We do that with our TAR funding as well. TAR's Town Aid Road. We usually run a minimum of a $400,000 balance. That's one-year funding, and we use that to cover any overages we may experience during the year for salt. If we have a bad year, extra salt we have to order, or overtime, or plowing, et cetera. Obviously, the past year wasn't too bad. We didn't have much snow.
Okay.
Not much overtime either. So, that helps that account. But that account is specific to anything related to a road, Town Aid Road. So, a sidewalk, we could use it. We checked with OPM, and they sent us confirmation. Kevin wouldn't, would never do that unless he had the okay from the State of Connecticut. So, they said if you have to use it, yes, it's allowable use under TAR. So, we're funded pretty well in the TAR account. It's about, I'm going to guess it's probably pushing 800, 700, 800. And then the LoCIP is right around 110, 130, and they're right now before we get additional funding.
But the sidewalks for New Street, that was a grant also?
That was a connectivity grant.
Right.
That was 400,000. We had a match of, I think that was 20,000, 20%.
Right.
And they started that project.
Yeah. No, that's exciting, yeah.
They took a few trees down, they're putting some drainage in, so that'll be a new sidewalk from Gilbert down New Street to Pound Street, and then right back to Main Street, taking that block. But we have other projects. We have Grove Street going down the hill. That's a major project. Prospect, we need to finish the walk going up Prospect Ridge toward the tennis courts. There's a gap there, so there's a lot of filling in yet to be done, not to mention the repair work because, go ahead.
How long is this roof going to last?
20 or 30 years.
25 to 30 years.
We got a warranty, I guess, how long is it really going to last?
25 to 30 years is the one...
Hopefully, it lasts longer. Most of the roofs last longer.
Okay.
You know, some of the roofs, like, that roof is thought to be almost original. And they didn't, I don't know when that was built. Do you know, Dan?
1948.
Well, originally is when they did, but that auditorium was the last section built. The Johnson Building was built in '52.
And that got a new roof. The Johnson Building got the new roof.
Right. They're for profit. Bassam Fellows is a for-profit operation. Well, you were on the committee.
Yeah. Couple of questions.
Just name for, so we have it on the record.
Andy Beheimer, 50 Blackman Road.
Thanks, Andy.
A couple of questions. But the LoCIP, does that require prevailing wage since the town's doing work as opposed to making it a grant?
No. There's a threshold. It's trying to be raised. It's currently, anything over 400,000 is required to have prevailing wage.
Okay. Is there a reason why we wouldn't make a grant to ACT and let them handle the bidding? And, I mean, Chris, from what I understand, I think Bill Diamond, he's a developer, right?
Right. I don't think he's involved anymore.
Oh, okay.
It's also our building.
Well, I know it's our building, but we struck a deal with ACT to, that they would handle the roof specifically, it says in the lease.
And that's what the public hearing is about, to remove that.
Why, I, I guess I'm just confused as to why we would relieve them of that obligation over 25 years. Why don't we do it once?
As a 501, all of the buildings on 501s, we pay for the roofs. We own the buildings.
Well, maybe we should start...
The Playhouse, we...
Well, I, I just don't understand why we would, like, we struck a deal and, and look, I'm a big supporter of ACT. You know, I understand that it was a great, it was a coup for the town to get ACT, but we negotiated a deal. And I don't know why we're, and if they need a new roof in five years or repairs, then come back and get it approved by the town. I, I'm just, I'm scratching my head as to why we...
You mean, we should make the grant available?
I just don't understand why we relieve them of an obligation.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Please?
Sure.
Are you saying that we should use LoCIP, but they should be doing the roof?
Well, what I'm saying is why are we, if we're going to give them the money, why don't we just say, this is a one-time grant, we're not changing the lease. If in 10 years something happens and you need more money for the roof, come back to the town.
No, that's kind of what we're...
Well, it doesn't really say that, though.
Well...
It relieves them of the obligation.
I know. Well, I, I appreciate you asking.
I mean, why, why, I just don't understand why we do it over the entire term. Why don't we just say, here's a one-time deal, come back with the understanding that ACT knows this, so they come to us asking for a concession. They can come back again, right?
Andy, I think part of it is that all of the other leases that we have with nonprofits...
In all due respect, that's really irrelevant.
Well, it's not irrelevant because I get, I gather that at the time, because maybe Bill Diamond was involved and was a developer, he just said, okay, we'll take care of it kind of thing. But that wasn't thinking on the best part of the 501(c)(3).
Well, okay. Well, I guess...
I mean, the alternative is we close our doors.
Can you, Dan, name an address for the record?
Well, Daniel Reed, the address, 35 Oscarletta Road.
Thank you.
The alternative is that we, that we hold.
I think there's, I understand what you're saying. I think there's two separate issues here.
And I will say that we raised, you know, that it's the town building, and in 2017 I raised over $2 million to make it a state-of-the-art theater, which is the town's now.
No, I understand that, and that was always the intent of the parties on the negotiation. But also, the intent of the parties was the town wasn't going to be involved in any major capital improvements. I'm not, there's two separate issues here. One issue is, do you guys need a new roof?
Yes.
Could we use LoCIP money? Yes. But that is a separate issue from saying, from here on out, we're going to give you another 15 years on your lease, and the rent's not specified. That's something else that needs to be addressed here, what the, what the rent's going to be in the fourth and fifth terms. We're giving you a major concession so as you can go out and be successful. Where I think everybody here is saying, yeah, you need a new roof. The town does own the building. It was maybe in the anxiousness to get something done, Bill overlooked the condition of the roof. But when it's spelled out clearly in the lease, I say, one-time grant, get your new roof. You're going to have a 25-year warranty. You should be responsible for maintaining the roof so the town's not in the real estate business. And if, if the new roof fails, go after the warranty or come back for more money.
Sure. It just seems to me that we're, you know, the town's the landlord, and we're the, we're the tenant, and, you know, we, I'm not sure why, I'm not sure why we would be responsible for it. I mean, it's, it's, it's like, you know, time, it has changed.
Ask, ask whoever negotiated the lease.
I don't want this becoming back and forth.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that there's two separate issues here.
Respect that. Thank you.
Yeah, Vincent, your $1.28 per view. So, the one question that I had, which you alluded to, was the rent. What does this do for the rent? In other words, in the later-term provisions, is there a rent increase? Is the rent now stabilized for the additional terms?
The rent is a dollar a year.
Is a dollar a year?
Right.
And it'll stay a dollar a year?
There is a fee on common charges that will increase depending on our cost.
Can I clarify? During the renewal term, you start paying rent, I think, in '27. It's $2,000 a month.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And, and the, the First Amendment doesn't address what the rent's going to be in the fourth and fifth renewal term, so that's something the attorney should address in the redraft.
So, would that be something we address during renewal?
It does, that settlement to be adjusted annually during the option period subsequent to March of '23 by the CPI, increase over the CPI for 2017. That, that's in the lease, the base lease.
Well, that's, that's for the, that's, I thought that was for the, the maintenance fee.
No. This is commencing on March 1st, 2032, option number three. The rent shall be increased to $2,000 per month, payable monthly.
That's the current lease, right?
Yeah, and this is just an amendment changing the two things.
I understood.
We're not changing anything else.
But you don't have a rent specified for renewal periods four and five in here, and you're putting two renewal periods without a four spot on that.
You're right there. Four and five is a part of it.
Yeah, so it should be, if you're going to amend the lease.
We should add it to this. Good point.
So, I'm wondering then, because this is a negotiation, remove all the obligation to take, to address the roof. Could there be some discussion about an increase in the rent for the later terms, the new terms we're adding? So that both parties benefit to some degree. ACT no longer has to worry about the roof repairs, makes them equivalent to other 501(c)(3)'s, and yet the town gets the benefit of a slightly higher rent in the later renewal terms.
Any comments from the Board?
Did we get, did we get to look at the numbers? Have we, have numbers shared with us with respect to...
What, their numbers, their financials? No. I haven't seen them, if that's what you're asking.
I mean, as a practical matter, they raised 2 million and, you know...
They, they used it.
And they used it, and they, they're an asset. It's like, okay, so what do we go from 2,000 to 2,500? I mean, I'm, it's kind of changed a little bit.
But we own the building.
I get the idea. Yeah.
It, it was like when we did Chef's Warehouse up at the Venus Building. What we did there is we gave them a rental abatement, I think it was to cover a half.
But that's a commercial enterprise.
Well, it is. It is. This is a 501.
Yeah, I'm just like, that's why I'm, I'm asking is, is, is 2,000, they don't know if 2,000, I don't know if 2,000 is kind of harmful to their operation or not, but we don't have a sense of that.
No.
And it's kind of seven or eight years from now anyways, you know, so...
Well, that's why we have five-year tranches. It gives you an opportunity to review and talk and discuss, so it's not an automatic paper.
I mean, they agreed to the two, which is fine. Let's just keep it...
Right, and that's why, yeah, I would keep it at the two, and then when the terms are up and we're renewing, then we can discuss an increase depending on what your financial situation is at the time. I mean, they don't know what their financial situation is going to be in 10 years or 15 years. And, and all I know is that ACT is a, is a valuable part of the town at this point, and we all want it to succeed.
If you think about, why are we in the business of doing it? We're not in the business of renting out to ACT because we're in the business of trying to extract every dollar that we can out of it. We want to provide, you know, things that are, you know, good and beneficial for the community.
And answer to the community.
Exactly. So, you know, on that basis, I, I think your proposal makes a lot of sense from a business perspective, but I think that's not quite what our, at least the way I see it, that's not my goal.
So, Barbara, are you saying, listen, make it two for the ensuing terms and just leave it as it is?
No, I'm saying that, that when the ensuing terms come up, we negotiate it then.
But the lease is going to be changed now, though. We almost, we almost have to commit to that.
But wouldn't we have been doing that anyway?
We could put that language in the lease.
We can put the language in.
And rent to be determined at time of renewal.
Okay. I mean, that's fine, two.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so let me get this straight. Hold on, Tom. Okay, go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion? Tom McManus, 310 West Lane. I have some experience, I'm not a contractor, but I have some experience with this material, 310, this EPDM it's called.
Yep.
EPDM, the roof stuff.
Okay.
So, McCarthy Roofing is going to be installing this, so this is going to...
Well, we're going to be getting other prices.
And there's going to be materials. The town's going to own the building for a long, long time, get the longest warranty you possibly can, okay? They're up to 30, 40 years.
Usually, it doesn't change the material, it changes what you pay.
But it will, will be more. It will be more.
We're looking at putting additional insulation as well for the eventuality that we may want to put panels.
And it, and it comes in white. It comes in the color white, which is energy efficient.
Right. There's gravel, there's stone on there now to cool it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the white stone, but I don't know. I've asked that question 100 times. Why do we use black roofs?
It was the color of tar.
Yeah, maybe. You know, Andy, is that it?
Yeah, it was tar, right?
Tar and fellas was the old side of it.
Yeah, tar roofs, yeah. Basically, there was some other reason.
I don't think you would mind the color of the roof, would you?
What's that?
No.
If we get a roof, we'll be happy with that. I'd rather call her. I have to have it stop raining on patrons.
Is it that bad where it's leaking?
They had to vacate premises, I mean, the rows. You were there.
We put towels, air knit, up in the ceiling to catch the water so it wouldn't drip on the patrons.
Tom, Evan, I'm just curious, Tom's bringing up specs. Who put together the specifications for the roof? I mean, was that done by the town?
The specifications?
Yeah.
They're going to be done. McCarthy does roofing, so it's a standard EPDM roof with a little extra insulation for the eventuality of maybe some solar panels. Garland is, McCarthy is the local roofer, and this is about, it's a big job for him, but he wouldn't go any bigger.
Right.
He wouldn't do a school, for example.
Right.
He'll patch it, there's a lot of that work for us, seam repairs, et cetera. But Garland is the consultant that came in, and that company will be giving us a price tomorrow or Friday.
Okay.
And they're much larger, and they do schools in Danbury and Bethel, Newtown, they're working in the area. Okay, so what I'm coming away with, and I want to be sure, is that we're going to add a paragraph or add the increase for the years four and five.
Yeah, the term.
The term. And then, number two, the rent to be reviewed at the, at each five-year period renewal.
Right, right.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you're going to do that, then, then you don't need renewal rents specified for four and five.
Right. Now, that's what we're saying. We're not specifying.
Oh, so we don't need one?
No. We just need the second one.
Yeah, right. We just need to add those two five-year terms.
They're in here.
Right.
But the increase in the rent is in the base lease that wasn't carried into the amendment for the fourth and fifth year.
Okay.
So, what we're doing, as you're agreeing to, is the rent to be reviewed each renewal period.
Okay.
Are there any other comments to be made this evening?
Just a question for ACT.
Mr. Giordano.
Mr. Giordano, 28 per view. Does that give you the certainty that you need with respect to rent? I mean, all the leases I've ever worked on, we wouldn't leave it open to discussion. We want to have some certainty or some cast. So, is, is there some, rather than leave it up for negotiation each time, would you want to see some kind of bounds on that?
I mean, yes.
A formula, right? A formula?
Yeah, or just increase it 2,000 by CPI or something, yeah. Because you don't really want to be, I don't think it's anybody's interest. really wanna be, I don't think it's, anybody's interested.
I mean, remember, we're, we're, we're always gonna be in a hundred and eighty-two-seat theater.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, there's only so much.
But the town isn't necessarily looking to-
Well, you've got a very forgiving land.
Expand the, the rent. I mean, we, it's a dollar a year, and then we, we jumped to two thousand.
Two thousand a month.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
So, I, I don't, I don't, well, and it's a good point, because we might not all be sitting here at the table the next time this gets negotiated, so you wouldn't necessarily want to leave it open to another, another table negotiating to Hyatt an amount for you.
Right. I wrote down WAI, W-A-I-V, what were you doing, WAI or something?
The reading.
A reading.
I thought, excuse me, but I thought that you now have three five-year options, and what we wanted to do was-
Starting in twenty-seven, correct.
Starting in twenty-seven was to give them two more five-year options.
Right.
Um, in addition to the-
Oh, no, it's five five-year options.
Starting twenty-seven.
Starting, okay, that's, that's what needs to be clear.
And that, what's your point?
I think that's, yeah.
Okay.
So, we have five five-year options starting in two thousand twenty-seven, zero rent, dollar rent a year.
Dollar a year rent.
Two thousand twenty, till two thousand thirty-two, then we have two thousand starting for the, that, well.
And each renewal period subsequent to that would be?
Would be to be determined.
Right.
TBD.
And there, I mean, I, I agree with the whole philosophy that we don't know, or we don't, the purpose here is to benefit the community. If they want, if they want something that's more certain, or range, or, or, uh, something that's prescribed, I don't see there's, I don't see why there's any reason why we couldn't just say, continue the two.
Yeah, we could.
I mean, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I think that's, that's sound, yeah.
No, I think that's fine.
Just like have a target that we know, or whoever is on this, this table knows, you know, what we were thinking.
And if he pays Bitcoin, we might want to add that if they-
I brought that up, the Redman, that we want to invest in Bitcoin, he said, don't even come in here. I don't know if you're allowed to.
He might be changing his tune soon.
I don't think you are.
So if, if I'm gonna write rent to be reviewed each renewal period, I'm hearing something different.
Yeah.
So, the rent at the two thousand and?
Can we say something, is it too nebulous to?
I think we have a comment.
Brady?
Can I, can I say something? Aaron Craig with ACT of Connecticut. Um, so in the original lease, um, it says, commencing on March first, twenty thirty-two, option number three, which you stated already.
Right.
However, wouldn't it be simpler to modify that to be four and five, or starting with option four, instead of going through all this renegotiating of the amount, so and so forth, because this is referencing that two thousand dollar increase.
I think what we're saying right now is that we would just keep it right where it's at, starting in twenty thirty-two.
Right, but, but that would deal with your reference in four and five. Correct, and that's what I'm suggesting, but you are, because we're adding terms, what I'm suggesting is, that's where that says option three, and you were saying, it doesn't mention four and five anywhere.
I would say-
No, 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 the amendment doesn't mention four and five, rent for four.
Correct, but why not just modify that in the amendment?
To the completion of the lease and, and that's all you.
But then we're not, but then, if, so, that's fine, but that's different than what we were saying, is that's not negotiating in four and five, right? That's not reviewing.
Well, that's what I heard you saying.
But we're trying to maintain a number that everybody was comfortable with, so that we didn't have an outrageous negotiation.
So it's predetermined it doesn't become in fifteen years.
Or did it cost, cost of living, or whatever.
Well, that's what I was thinking, of just, you know, if somehow we have some crazy inflationary environment, that, you know, things, you know, a pack of gum costs a hundred dollars, it's, uh-
There was also note for CPI in here.
Yeah, as long, I don't have the, the original lease in here, so as long as there's, if there's something tagging it to CPI, I feel much better about that.
Yeah, it's right above the, the bottom.
Yeah, using the same parameters that we did for the, um, right, set amount, adjusted annually for the CPI increase over-
They won't?
Perfect, okay, that's-
No, that's great, that's, that's exactly, so it looks like we, we covered it. They also included the roof in that lease. They were tough negotiators those days.
Okay, so I hope, what, what am I left with here?
Well, I guess, so one question I have is-
We have a town meeting that we have to go to.
We have, well, that's what I was gonna ask.
I have to draft the lease that's correct for the town meeting.
Do we need another hearing to-
And I need to make it available to people. So, if, the purpose of a public hearing is to hear comments-
Right.
To change what's being proposed, what am I hearing?
We're taking out the roof, we're adding the two additional five-year periods, and they're, and we're, um, linking it to the language that was already in the existing lease, consistent with the-
Increasing by CPI, yeah.
Increasing by CPI and that, and that's it, right?
Yeah.
And the reason why this is sort of an emergency is, is you said earlier, is because we have a production of Kinky Boots starting in, you know, three weeks, two weeks, and, and, you know, if it rains, we're gonna have to cancel performances, and-
That or buy more towels.
And, and that's why we looked at just doing a section right now.
Right.
Getting that done, getting everything settled down, and then when there's time-
So we can do that, right?
So, so let me ask you, were you the numbers you gave before for the different? Go ahead.